Good evening, this is City Pleasantville, folks. City Council's working these days through F 18, 2023. Time is six thirty-one P M. This meeting has been re-advertised on City's newspaper. Meeting that, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Roll call? Present.
Time is present.
Present.
Korea?
Present.
Six and a Sunday.
Okay, this is the oath of office for Mark Raven, being promoted to battalion chief. Repeat after me, please. I
I, Mark Raven.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially.
And justly perform
And justly perform.
All the duties
All the duties.
Of the office of
Of the office of battalion chief.
For the city of Pleasantville.
For the city of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
This is my wife Christina, my oldest daughter Kylie, my Kendall, and then my youngest daughter, Dwayne. So, thank you very much. Thank you, council. Thank you to my friends and fellow coworkers and firemen for being here for me. I appreciate it. And hopefully I don't want you guys down. So, thank you.
Ready?
I just want to say, Sana, insider. Keep up the great work. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you, Christina.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations, I know you're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Battalion chief, first of all, looks like you outnumbered at home, ha ha. And I've never, ever, ever heard you have such a short speech. What are you going on tonight?
We know you wanted to get home before midnight.
Thank you for that.
We appreciate it.
It was a three-minute limit, I heard.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mark, on battalion chief. You're going to do a great job. Next, I have some accommodations that I have to present. Pat and Colby. At the time, recruit Peter LaBretti and Kristen Cortez. They are now firefighter Peter LaBretti and recruit and firefighter Cortez. So, I'm going to read it out.
This goes to Barry.
No. Okay, so everyone, every so often, you know, we'll put in a position where, you know, we do some, you know, great things, you know, for the homeowners and the residents, you know, and active fire. And I'm going to read off what the crew did in the city of Northfield. Certificate accommodation on this December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, at nineteen fifty hours, seven fifty four civilians. And to unrespond and mutual aid to the city of Northfield for reported working structure fire. A rapid response to the scene from Engine One facilitating command to assign Engine One's crew to vent and turn search through a window on the D side of the structure and conduct a primary search of the rear bedrooms for three missing dogs. Engine One entered the structure through the window on the D side and were met with heavy smoke and active fire in the kitchen and also in the walls. Engine One's crew conducted a rapid search of bedrooms utilizing search techniques and thermal imaging cameras to locate and rescue the three dogs. Engine One's crew reported that one of the dogs was almost missed because he was hiding under a bed. A secondary search was performed where the bed was relocated from the primary search and firefighter Orgeas, that Tom can't be here, was able to locate the last missing dogs. All the dogs were rescued and when I wrote this, were expected to make full recovery, they had made a full recovery. The crew of Engine One represented the city of Pleasantville and the Pleasantville Fire Department with great professionalism, knowledge, skill, and determination, and also demonstrated their commitment to the city of Pleasantville and our mutual aid partners. The Engine One crew, at the time, remember, Captain Stan Colby, firefighter Theo Exporjes, recruit firefighter Peter LaBretti, and recruit firefighter Kristen Cortez. You know, congratulations, one job well done. And I also have a combination march for you guys, too.
Thank you.
I just want to add, you know, the members of the fire department, you know, we do a lot of things, you know, not only just rescuing dogs, but people, you know, we also do a lot of customer service and, you know, go out to the community and, you know, do as well. I mean, from, you know, the basic, you know, of installing smoke detectors, you know, for our residents, giving out smoke detectors, to playing a certain person on December twenty-fifth, as Councilwoman Thomas says. In addition to, you know, also, you know, donating and having a good time with the kids, you know, with Shop With a Hero as well. So, you know, we do, we do our best for ourselves, for our residents and our citizens, and, you know, this is one of the things that we, you know, have done. So, congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations on your combination and to all the firefighters here, stay safe and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for everything that everybody, everybody does, do a good job.
Just want to thank you guys for everything. Thank you, congratulations, and thank you for your services.
Hi, I said this, thank you very much, you work hard, thank you and keep it up.
Thank you guys for your commitment and dedication.
Congratulations and thank you to all the other firefighters as well.
To the entire team, who probably do not say it often enough, that we certainly appreciate that your life is on the line every single day that you come to work here. So, we appreciate that and we celebrate moments like this, not only the promotions, but when you take the time out to go above and beyond in what you do. So, congratulations.
Thank you for the job, thank you for your service in this, and the extra service that you do is well needed. You can survive without that community, and anytime you pitch in, chip in, whatever you invented is, is very, very appreciated. Thank you very much. With that being said, if I move on to the next. If that's it, right?
First on the agenda is ordinance number six, that's the first reading. amended chapter eighty-seven, Article one, entitled parts and playgrounds of the city code.
I'm asking if we can do this ordinance, because there is additional question about this ordinance. If you could go in front of the committee?
It's up to the chair, or it's going before the committee? This is twice here, you all today, what?
I know some of it is part of the committee, but not all the verbiage. There's one here, like the ten people, and, but there's other questions that my fellow colleagues have.
It's up to you all, it's only here because your committee put it here. Can you mind?
You want to explain it first?
No, I think that whatever person they have, they bring through committee, unless you want to ask a question, do you think it can be cleared up here or do you have additional information?
Let's pull. Please, or table it, I'm sorry, not pull it, let's table it.
Fine, this is your, is your main.
Ordinance number seven, this is the first reading. amended chapter two oh five, Article one, entitled vacant and abandoned properties from the city.
Will you share to defer to the solicitor, please?
Yes. Yes.
For that, you'd like to have an explanation?
Yes.
So essentially, this arises out of the enabling legislation from the state of New Jersey, which was amended in two thousand and twenty-two, I believe. And it requires all municipalities to be brought into compliance specifically as it relates to the registration of creditors and the registration, which are banks very often, and the registration of creditors of commercial property. The vacant and abandoned municipal ordinance essentially arises from the enabling legislation from the state statute, allowing the city to have a registration program whereby if there are properties that are vacant or abandoned or going into foreclosure, which is where the new provision comes in, that the creditor or the creditor of a commercial property has to notify the city clerk within a certain period of time, where they'll be subject to fines. There's also a provision in there which allows the municipality to third-party contract with an entity, like a collection agency essentially, to collect the registration fees and interest that may compound thereon in lieu of the city code enforcement individuals doing it. And then there are a lot of other additions and deletions to make it flow more smoothly and be in better compliance with what the new statute from the state indicates.
Any questions?
Is this mandatory for us to do this, or it's mandatory?
Two of the provisions are mandatory, the creditor for residential and the creditor for commercial are mandatory. The registration, collection by a third party is permissive, it's not mandatory, and nor does this say that you will do it. It simply says you can do it, right? So, this body can determine a year, two years, three years, whether it wants to or not. Right, the only thing that is required is the creditor registration, they must register now. And with their issue of summons and a complaint on a foreclosed property, if there's an out-of-state agent for a commercial property, they have to register within a certain period of time. It's really about keeping the city notified who owns these properties, so that when they're vacant or abandoned, they can, we know who they are, because ultimately down the line, without giving out legal advice, there are things called, there's, there's the ability sometimes to the city to take property, right? If it's not being kept, especially even if taxes are not being paid. So, there's a whole, whole process to it, where this really protects the city mandatory, but then there are other portions that are put in there that you can implement at your will. It's eighteen pages, if you'd like to read it. It's very.
That was statewide, right, you were saying?
Oh, it's, it's for everybody, it's for every municipality. And, you know, yeah, every municipality had to enact at least the commercial properties and the creditor of commercial properties and the creditors of residential properties, so there's no discrepancy.
So, since I asked, so are we looking just to implement those two, or are we also looking to implement the, you know, collecting of the revenue? That's what it is?
That, that's not, that doesn't arise until which time you decide you want it to arrive. But when you create, let me just say this, typically when law is created, it, just like a will, it takes into consideration the future, otherwise you would be amending things constantly. So, it enables you to do what you want in the future or to not do it. The only thing that's mandatory is that the commercial, that the creditors of residential and commercial properties must register the properties under certain circumstances. And that has, and this ordinance gives notice to them. So that, you know, we can't just say, well, state statute says that we have to adopt an ordinance or amend our ordinance, letting them know that this is what they must do, or they're subject to certain fees and this is what the registration fees are. I'm not recommending or taking a position as it relates to the third party. That's, that's simply what the state statute allows you to do if you want to do it. And then you would pass a resolution later on to say, this is what we want to do, if that ever came up.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Maybe, if I may add, just currently, under the current ordinance, the city's already in a position and has established the revenue mechanism. Based on your question, so we are collecting the registration fees for the residential vacant and abandoned properties.
Any more questions?
Resolution sixty-six, approving as a middle of a grant application and executing grant agreement with the United States Department of Transportation for a safe street and road for all grants.
Certainly, so we've been advised by our, the city's grant analysts that there is a new bipartisan infrastructure law established for new safe streets and roads for all. So, this is a new grant under their discretionary aid program, and it allows municipalities to apply for what they call a planning grant. And we believe that we are in a good position to qualify or become eligible for the planning grant, because we have adopted what they call a complete, complete street policy, where we follow all of the NJ DOT provisions and regulations as it relates to complete streets. And that's pedestrian and bicycle, bike paths and roadways, making sure that all that are using those areas, those shared spaces are safe. So, this ordinance, I mean, this resolution is just a support document for the city to apply for the grant. Once we apply for the grant, then there'll probably be more information coming before you all as to what the next step will be.
Is there a predetermined amount or is there a wonder list?
I believe there is an amount. But it's a planning grant, so those amounts are really typically love for you to hire, like someone to come in and just do the plan, or you use your planner, place, do the plan, and then the big money comes in once you get the grant.
Resolution sixty-seven, granting approval of its celebration to Virginia Basil Musial.
Any questions?
Good evening. Look over to go, they're paid between this council meeting and this council meeting, there are really only three, two, two minor ones, and then our payroll for, from two weeks ago. So, there were ones that were paid up between this council meeting and this council meeting. I'm looking for approval for bills to be paid, I'll go over some of the ones that have some of the high numbers. If you look down on page one, in the middle, City Land Electric, fifty-two thousand, that is two months' worth of electric bill, most of it has to do with our street lighting. Our street lighting bill is between twenty and twenty-two thousand dollars a month, and then the balance is for all the other electric that we use. One right below that is our, it's March trash removal from ACUA. And last, council meeting, there was a question regarding citywide towing, you see that there from the bottom, we had towed one of our tow trucks, I'm sorry, one of our dump trucks, before our dump truck broke down, so that's our bill.
Dump truck, tow truck.
Pardon me?
Dump truck, tow truck.
Dump, a tow truck pulled our dump truck. And my wife raised her granddaughter, how many tow trucks can a tow truck tow? I don't know, but one dump truck anyway. On page two, if you look down, about halfway down, the general code, this is updating of all the codes from state and that goes to the clerk's office, we do this on an annual basis. Second from the bottom on the same page, ESO Solutions, we have a small bill last month for ESO, this is for the balance of the bill. And what we did is, we separated fire department from the police department and their software. The police department have one software that Chief Wigan became fire director, he brought that over. It didn't do the job that the fire department needed. So, Chief, Tarthel will be applying to other software at a lower price that fits their need better. So, we canceled half the contract with the police, and this was dealt with the fire department, and it saves us about three thousand dollars a year.
Next question?
Pardon me?
Does it, does it work better, I mean, is it better suited to what you're doing?
So, this is, this is a software that we used previously called Firehouse. They purchased, integrated, upgraded, and it's firefighter-friendly. You know, it also has, it takes the human factor out of like requests for like comp time, you know, vacation, everything else, it's all, we can track everything with this as well. In addition to, it's quicker and it's more user-friendly, and it doesn't get rejected from the state with the spam emails anymore, so. And after, we have it full in place, it's about, was it about five grand per, per year that we're going to save roundabout, as opposed to what we are paying, and it does everything that we need.
If you go over to page three, five from the bottom, State of Treasure, State of New Jersey, this is a four thousand dollar bill that we pay annually to the state for our sewer system and our stormwater drain system that we have. This is a, we pay this, it's on an annual basis. On page four, second one down, we're looking at school board for month of April. Two below that, pure blend apparel, we purchased uniforms for the track and field team of Brentford Recreation Center. And then six or seven down below, that's South State, that is draw four on Decatur Avenue. We're still, we're still holding probably six hundred thousand dollars from the, from the contract for South State. And then that's all the unusual.
Do you have any time for it, or do you finish over?
I know they're working on, you see police out there all every day, so, I mean, hopefully private next thirty days will be done quicker.
On page two, there is a figure that says SHP and submated repose removal, how many pulled over there?
Put it over, Captain.
On page two, there is a figure that three thousand five hundred dollars is
For concrete?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a bid that we submitted, there was, I don't know, everybody dunking donuts, there was a hole that was kind of knocked down, and as a result, there was probably five-inch base sticking out. So, what we did is, cut, with hacking tools, removing that base and leveling it out, otherwise it became a trip out for, for lappes. You'll see over there, there's now an orange barrel probably placed on top of it, nobody dunking donuts, that should be gone probably within a week or so. Any other questions, comments?
There, the microphone. Is there any, are there any parts of the city that we could look at, maybe a solar installation somewhere?
I guess we can look at any of them, probably. I don't, I think in the past, we've looked at solar lights, they just didn't seem to be effective as, as a light, and you know, and just even on a cloudy day, it's cloudy all day, you didn't even have that much light.
I still got sunshine in a month of May.
After a while.
Happy to help us.
Come on, everybody.
So, yeah, we, we understand the issues with the high cost of electricity. One of the things that we're working on now through the sustainable, sustainable Jersey program is a audit, a citywide audit, that's, I think all of the buildings have been audited and assessed thus far, where we're going to change all of our, you know, upgrade, all of our electric to LEDs and high-efficiency appliances and usage. And part of that process, the Board of Public Utilities and Atlantic Electric has a program that once you go through this audit process, then you then become eligible to apply for an upgrade for LEDs, streetlights throughout the entire city. So, we're taking the necessary steps to get to that point where we could actually do the upgrades throughout the entire city.
The audit's done, right?
The audits throughout the facility is done, and then we have to actually put it out to bid to do the upgrades, and once the upgrades are done, then we go through the process to apply for the upgrades for the LED streetlights.
So, they finished most of them. The audit?
Council put the streetlight, the streetlight activated. I doubt we were close for a long time.
I know the conversion of L to L is costly, I'm thinking about the cost, do you have an idea of where we get it funding from?
No, the funding comes through the program once you meet all of the criterias that we're going through now.
And I think some, some of the decorative streetlights we have on Main Street are LED.
We operate those.
Yeah. The light is, you know, because it's lower in stature than a normal light bulb, produce enough lighting for you. I think when you get up to the bigger poles, you're going to need some, through a sophisticated LED lighting, that's what we're looking for through the program.
And I know we had, asked this question before, I think maybe about a year or so ago, about, you know, talking about LED, what about solar lights for our streetlights? I mean, that was something that I thought, you know, would be really smart, and I saw it being done in quite a few towns, especially if you go two oh six, that's all you see is solar lights all up and down here, and...
We're looking at that as well.
Okay, because if we still have to pay with the LEDs, then, you know, maybe we should look at it.
We are looking at it, we have a business set.
Yes, on page four, Stanford, four eight five five five. Barry, if you can answer that one.
That's it, we have.
I just want to finish the question. So the seven hundred dollars, is that for one day? It says work in a court office?
No. They, they charge twenty-five hours an hour.
You said they charge twenty-five hours a night?
Whoever's here, the person that's here, if one person, two persons, two people, and I think it's a couple times a week, their, their rate that they charge us is twenty-five hours an hour.
Oh, so this is an outside entity?
It's a, no, it is an outside entity. So you know we lost our court administrator on March thirty-first, and that being said, we had to get additional help. In the court situation, we cannot use outside agencies with personnel that does not have court experience. So because we're having conversations about the potential of consolidated or shared services in Atlantic City, Atlantic City has extended the help to us, so we have two people coming over from Atlantic City, three, four days a week to Pleasantville to help our court out until we get to the place where we are going to determine what we're in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just brought your attention to there, so on the site, the county, the site had Pleasantville, there's one of the participants in this, in this county, in the county program, and I know we're not, absolutely not participating.
Could be on there.
Out there.
What, on what, what site? If you get any information, I'll let you talk about where, where, always, as you know, we have a partner.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Next is the public portion, anyone from the public who wants to speak on agenda items to the agenda items poll. Step, step forward, one time to the mic, three minutes.
Good evening, Pleasantville City Council.
Good evening.
Urban Moreno Rodriguez, Pleasantville, New Jersey. I'm sorry I was late to the work meeting, but I just wanted to know, when we talk about amending the fees for the usage of parks and playgrounds, what is, what are the fees? What are they changing to? Are they being reduced or?
That's been tabled, that's been tabled.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Not yet.
State of, and is there a motion to close the portion?
Motion.
On the favor?
Aye.
Now we'll move forward to discussion. Council. Are you happy to take?
Oh, not that yet. I mean, no, no. Nothing, thank you.
Okay, and I have nothing at this time also, so I entertain motion to close the work session. On the favor? Good evening, this is City of Pleasantville City Council regular meeting, today's date is April seventeen, twenty, twenty-three, the time is seven oh three PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper, performs with the Public Meeting Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law, would you please stand for implication and flag shake? I will be there, I can't even come, but we'll be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us a stay, thank you for it, give us a trespass, as we forgive those trespassers against us, believe this law in its definition, and let us be evil without taking our own world for our own. Flag to leave this to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, on a heart, individual, with liberty and justice for all. And roll call.
End of court.
Question.
Generalero.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Camona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
I maintain a motion to dismiss with the previous minutes. Motion.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Cast out the nominations and allegations.
Ordinance, ordinance number six, amend chapter one eighty-seven, article one entitled Parks and Playgrounds of the City Code.
Make a motion to table.
Motion.
Second.
Ordinance number six has been tabled. Next on the agenda is ordinance number seven, amend chapter two oh five, article one entitled Taking and Abandoning Properties of the City Code.
Motion. Second.
Orderment seven is moved into second reading. Resolution number six.
I will need a vote.
Davenport.
Yes.
Vanalero.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Do we need to do a roll call for ordinance six? Do we need to do a roll call?
Confirm that, confirm that is tabled.
It was tabled, so it's effectively, you don't necessarily have to have a roll call because it was taken, not taken out from the roll, and it was unanimous upon this decision. If you want to cure it because you feel bad, well, I think it's wrong. So I would ask, I would ask first that the council president ask for a motion to revisit ordinance number six, and then you can go ahead and do the other.
Motion to revisit ordinance number six.
Motion. Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
I have.
Motion to table.
Second.
Second. Roll call. Davenport.
Yes.
Vanalero.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number six has been tabled. Next is resolution sixty-six, approve the supplemental of a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the United States Department of Transportation for a safe street and roads for all grant.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Davenport.
Yes.
Vanalero.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Resolution sixty-six has been approved. Next is resolution sixty-seven, grant approval of an in celebration to Majid Bezos, Masseter.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Davenport.
Yes.
Vanalero.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Resolution sixty-seven is being approved, I need a motion for the builders.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Davenport.
Yes.
Vanalero.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sisram. Next will be the public portion.
Next is the public portion, anyone in the public who wants to speak, one time to the mic, three minutes of the mic, and first, I got one person, great, great.
Good evening again. Yeah.
Excuse me, what, okay.
You can go first.
Okay, excuse me.
Oh, okay, sorry. Good evening, Pleasantville City Council. Urban Moreno Rodriguez, Pleasantville, New Jersey. So I just wanted to make sure the city council was well aware that today, on the first day of Earth Week of this year, our governor of New Jersey, Phil Murphy, announced and signed the, I think the toughest environmental justice law in the country. I look forward with the state implementing this environmental justice protection law to protect our environment, particularly overburdened communities, that includes Pleasantville. So tonight, I have a, an ask for the Pleasantville City Council. It's, it's been too long. It's time to rescind this trash transfer site deal with the developer at eleven Devens Lane, and I look forward to the Pleasantville City Council working on this. Enough is enough. No amount of money is worth the effect, the detrimental effect that this trash transfer station will have on the lives of people in Pleasantville. It's time we follow this law and we protect the people that live in our overburdened communities. And I'm sorry, some of you are looking at me like I'm wasting your time, but I don't think I'm wasting my time trying to protect the people of Pleasantville. Thank you, have a good night.
My name is Stephanie Park, this is my wife Lisa Park. First of all, good afternoon, council.
Good evening.
We are the owners of the Penn Air Plaza on the corner of Main and Line, foot in that South Main Street. I'm basically here to voice my frustration about an issue that happened about two weeks ago in our unit. It was a sewage flood, sewage flood, and I felt like the Public Works Sewerage Department kind of dropped the ball and came, came to help us. It was a flood in my unit that started about five fifteen PM, which obviously is after hours, it was only one guy still working for the Public Works Sewerage Department. He came up within about forty-five minutes to an hour later. He concluded that the origin of the problem came from a manhole which is in front of the Manhattan Bus Supply, in the middle of the parking lot, which is obviously not city grounds, they don't have the jurisdiction over those grounds, and he laid, he left. When he leaves, the unit basically flooded for five, six hours straight. We were kind of getting ping pong back and forth, I guess RPM, the management company was going back and forth with the city, trying to figure out whose jurisdiction it was, and ended up being the city's jurisdiction. A guy finally came out from like an hour and a half away, about eleven o'clock at night, and finally stopped the flood. Squeezes, urine, and everything on there. But the RPM management people came out and they did, so they went under the sidewalk on Main Street and stopped the flood finally. So I'm basically here for a direction, because this is our unit, this is the end of the day, to be honest. And so I'm looking for any help, if anybody has any kind of direction for me, which way to go, we, we're talking about, sort of playing, but I'm basically just looking to send us off.
I would like to add, so I think the discrepancy was whose jurisdiction it was, but I still feel like it shouldn't have gone on for five hours. The type of damage we had, I saw human excrement coming through while we had clients present. Yeah, um, the thing is that, like my husband said, it was a game of ping pong. All we wanted to do was get it to stop, and now we accrued a lot of damage to anything that was on the floor from our mats and everything. So we're, as my husband said, we're looking to see which direction we can go to get compensated because this was not a, this wasn't a problem or issue in our unit, it was from outside. And as we understand, it was a sewage blockage. And so here we are.
Just a question, did you know the issue took place, and was, was the chain, the chain of direction?
I, I think that's something that we need to investigate. So my office wasn't made aware that there was a sewer incident, actually I, I rode down the street and saw it coming out of your facility, and I knew Public Works was on their way. However, the follow-up was typically when there's a sewer issue, we get a follow-up as to whose jurisdiction it is, and the notice that I had said that it was RPMs. So I think we have to do our, do our due diligence to do the investigation to see exactly what happened, and I will certainly move on that as quickly as I can and guide you guys through, you know, the information, and should there be additional processes for you, I'll make sure that you're, you're made aware of it. So I just need you to quickly, just, you can write your number down for me, you have a pen, a paper?
Council president, do you, did you contact your insurance company?
Yes.
Because typically when you contact the insurance company, they perform an investigation as well, where you should.
And you say you did that, because that's one of the things that our insurance companies want to have them do as well, but I wasn't sure where you guys were at.
Well, yeah, I wanted to, the council to be made notes of what happened, because it can happen again. This is a problem with the actual city sewage line, it could, it could happen tomorrow.
Should it be the case, and this is why we need to do the investigation.
I have a question.
Yes.
When did this take place? Approximately March twenty-ninth at five fifteen PM.
I wrote down this all the same thing, me and my wife, so another ditch, other barber that you have. Yeah, yeah. We out front, it was right, not wearing a four, you know, like, yes, I'm saying, we could hold staff, trying to keep it at bay for hours and hours. And, and so like I said, we're not looking to come up on that, we just want to be able to.
Replace what was damaged and nothing.
Clean it up, we get a professional engineer come through, you know, they can do it for us.
Well, I mean, we have to look into it, and, you know, I hear you guys saying that it was a city's, you know, issue, but we have to, let us look into that and, yes, okay.
Right, but you had water and sewage coming through the sidewalk.
We'll, we'll look into it, so, I, I did see it though.
Yeah.
So, okay, but we'll, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Sorry, you guys have booked.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for your time.
And then if you get them, keep this card and give me that.
Should I put email as well?
Yeah, I almost, I was standing there.
That would be a little bit.
We know it's just a traffic. Yeah, we can still operate. Like, we walked in there, you wouldn't, you wouldn't really know.
Until you really investigate and try.
Right, but, no, you have to keep in mind too, you know, it came up to the baseboard, it flooded out, it was this much. So, you know, that water got behind the baseboard, you know, that wood takes a little while to mow, a lot can come out of it.
We want to talk about the smell and the amounts of chlorox bottles we had to do in order to somewhat sanitize.
Yeah, so.
And we had clients.
Sorry, I'm not prepared to talk.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, council, for your time. Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ute Marin, I'm the owner of La Cuscha Mamo Cafe. And I came here today because enough is enough, and I don't know if it was the company or the city who was working on the project of Decatur Avenue. And I came like two months ago when I complained, I don't know if it was the chief of police or somebody in the, in the police department, about the way they handled the traffic and situation, people going in and out of La Cuscha, going in and, and keep going in and out of Decatur Avenue, they didn't do anything. And every time that I do a project, and the city made me pay for a traffic planner, and that costs a lot of money, and I don't understand why this company that has been working six months in, in, in the street haven't done it. It's, it's attempting and against the people's safety, because you see those big trucks, the big, and how do you call those, the big machinery, running back and forth, I mean, there is kids walking around, there is car, there is, I mean, I have tapes, and I don't feel, I feel that I feel like a discriminator, because I don't understand why, when it's something, when I have, when, I think... because I don't understand why, when it's something, when I have, when, I think everybody is supposed to do what is right. And, and the police department didn't do enough. I don't know who the traffic, and the traffic and the person in charge of, you know, when I get excited, I can talk.
Me too.
Exactly. I'm, I'm really upset. So they've been working there for more than six months and the project is still not done. And I don't see any, any, anybody like watching out for the customers, for, for my business, for the people that goes in and out. That one, that one, that one mattered. And another thing, and Mr. Harding was telling me about the, the planning to make like a trash and, something about trash and.
What is that, the trash? Trash, trash.
Trash, I don't know if the people knows about it. So I would appreciate if you guys let me know what is, what is going on over there so I can inform the Spanish community about what's going on. And because, I mean, I think this is something that matters to everybody. You know, we all live here, and my business are here. I know all my friends live in Casamitl. So I think this is something really important for the community that everybody should know. Thank you.
I'll follow up, council, with our team engineers to see what the traffic plan is and all that, with that instructive project.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to close the public portion.
I'm sorry. Do you mind giving us the number?
I have.
I, I do have a question on subject that, Jose?
Jose Marvin.
Jose, about the transfer station. Because that's something that has been bothering me for a long time. I voted against it in the beginning. And I want to ask my, my council, as far as this project right now, I know it's up in the state's hands. They're looking at it, I guess. Am I correct?
No.
No? It hasn't gone it for you?
No.
I thought it was at the state's, you know, I thought the state had to make the okay on that. That's not the process.
That's final process.
That's the final process.
To our knowledge, and we have, we, the city are not, is not involved in that process. That's up to the developers. And to our knowledge, we have not been given any type of notification that it has hit that level yet. I think the last time we discussed, there was still some outstanding issues, whether or not it had to go through planning and other agencies, county agencies and things of that nature. But the final step is, is either EPA or DEP. And to my knowledge, it is, and because we're not involved, I'm just going to say it this way, to our knowledge, it has not gone through those steps yet.
So if we as a city choose the state riverhead and don't do anything, that is to give the other entities the feeling that we're okay with it. And I don't know how this council feels now, how many of you guys are still, you know, for this project. But this is something that I've been against for the longest. It's right there in my neighborhood. I'm looking at the city who is looking to advance and get better and bring in radibles as we've talked about for years. And I just don't think that this project is going to be something that's going to allow any radibles to come into our town that, you know, cares about the city or cares about what's going on. Once they see that we're bringing a transfer station, so-called transfer station, I call it a dump. You know, I just don't see anybody wanting to come in here and do business in Pleasantville. So I'm not going to say we send it now, but I'm going to sit down and talk to our, our council and Ms. Peyton. And at the next meeting, I'm going to make a decision on making that motion, so. Thank you.
I mean, you can have a discussion.
Yes.
But I'm not sure what you're resenting because there's nothing before a council to resent. So let's have the discussion.
No, but we have voted, we voted yes on it.
Let's have that discussion.
I would ask that you not pursue this conversation beyond this.
Okay.
Okay. This is something that we can certainly discuss in executive session.
Good.
Or especially in something because there are obviously legal ramifications to contract.
I would like to talk about, yes.
May I just say a motion to close the public portion?
Motion.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Not second. And now, we have a council. Counsel, nothing further at this time. Counsel, we're barred for it.
Um, I was kind of overplaying and at first I want to apologize for being late. It's not usual, but I had a call with a young man that was shared through county facilities in my country. So I was very busy. And I'm glad they're firing charges against the shooter now, so that's why I had to come late, so I'm sorry.
Good evening, everybody. Just want to remind everybody that summertime, kids out there playing, please drive at twenty-five miles per hour in the city limits, please. Thank you.
God bless them.
Uh, yes. First of all, congratulations to, on the fire. It was a serious article in the paper, I think it was Saturday, Sunday. And talk about the concessionaires' deal that we, you know, voted against, we rescinded. And this is something that it seems like we need as a city to look back into it because it was revenue for our city and all the things that we're talking about making better. This project that we had in place, seventy-eight million dollars, and not only the money aspect, it was the clientele that this company would have brought to the city of Pleasantville. And because we rescinded it, we got rid of every one of those possibilities. I think it's something that we need to look into because now we have the press talking about that deal that we made and how we rescinded it and got rid of it. So it's something that, you know, me as the chair of the sewer committee, wastewater committee, I'm definitely going to sit down. Hopefully we can have a meeting within the next week or two. But this is something that I think the council really needs to sit down and look at and think about bringing back to the table so that we could have some type of help for the city of Pleasantville. Something that would have helped us. And I don't know as far as monetary wise, what it looks like now, but I think it's something that we need to look back into. So, thank you.
Counsel, one more time.
I was with you on the first one. I'm against you on the second one. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Jose, I want to say thank you for your participation, you know, for allowing us to be in your facility for the childcare network, I mean childcare insurance program. We also have an event coming up. It's called the Big Top. This is year two through the N P P program. And that's going to be May the thirteenth. So I'm quite sure you'll see the yard signs and, and other literature around the city. Have a great night.
Mayor?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Congratulations to Mark Raymond being promoted tonight and to the Ballard Awards. Just want to say that we do hear your concerns and your concerns are our concerns. Whether we can do something about it or not, that may be another story, but we do hear your concerns. And council, I want to remind you all to fill out your GIP information, the GIP information. Say that, that while everyone's here at the full line for the, for the elected official seminar. I think that's, oh, and make this. At the Pleasantville Recreation Center, there's going to be a spring play, senior citizens' spring play that we have every year, and that's from twelve to three. It's free to all Pleasantville residents, sixty and over. You'll be there. The transportation will be provided. Anybody that knows anyone in Pleasantville, please come out. We have a good time there. And it's, this started with, because during Kentucky Derby. So it's wear your fanciest hat. And there will be a prize for hat, best male and best female. And that's about it, I think. That's about it for tonight. I might once I'm done, I'll think of something else. But I think that's it for tonight. Oh, Jose, the other day I was, oh, that, when the health, when we had the house over there, the health there, the mini health there. People were going in and out of the parking lot. How were they able to get in, only through the back way?
They, they coming in through the, to the, to the road that I build in the back.
Oh, behind the, oh, that, behind.
But I mean, not many people knows about it. So everybody, when they see like all those big trucks walking in there, they assume that the store was closed, so they just, I mean.
Okay.
You know, there is people going in, but not like as, as before the, before the project started. So my revenue went down like ten percent and it's been like that for over six months.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah. Because I saw that, have you recall me, I saw that cars going in and out and I just thought it was, you know, partly taken care of. But that's the one that we'll take it, we'll check it out.
Like if you go there every Thursday, I mean, there is not even place to go, you know, like before now. I mean, you go there on Thursday and there is, the, the parking is almost empty. I mean, there is people who are going in, but not like they used to, you know?
That's right. All right. Thank you. And that's it. Everyone have a good evening. Just one notification. The city of Pleasantville, we do celebrate National Day of Prayer. So we'll be hosting through our clergy, the city of Pleasantville's clergy team will be hosting National Day of Prayer on the month, May the fourth, right outside of city hall, twelve noon. Come down, invite people and pray for your city and, and this nation.
Yes. I say the article too as well. And, you know, it just, it just reminded me of all of last year, the projects we had in front of us. You know, it just reminds us of, if we have a chance to really actually build the city of Pleasantville out, move forward with the projects we have to move forward to. When you start listening to those in the audience, they don't really actually know all the facts. And when they don't know all the facts, they give you a decision, give you, last year, their opinion to pull this, to pull that, to pull this. And, and remember the council listened to that. So then what we have here is we got a situation where we got debt on top of debt on top of debt. And we're not building ourselves up. We, we have, we have a rope, we use a rope to hang ourselves, instead of using a rope to pull ourselves out of debt. And that's not right. There's no viable reason. And if anybody could ever share, we can tell when the concessionaires' grievance was actually. And that, that was immediate fix for the city of Pleasantville, pull itself out of debt. Fifteen million dollars upfront, take care of our bills and our responsibility. And I shouldn't be the only one screaming this thing here. You know, everybody should. Because simple fact of the matter is this, just a second ago, we got this, this business owner talking about the tie and, and the mishap that happened with their business. Well, we noticed that, we know that there's a health and safety concern because we know we have dated terracotta piping in our, in the ground. And it had to be replaced. Just because you see it doesn't mean that it has to, doesn't have to be fixed. So for health and safety reasons, for budgetary reasons, for just plain old, you know, let's do the right thing for the city of Pleasantville, those reasons, no put. Sometimes you have to put everything you got, you have to put it aside. And put it aside and do what's best. I don't care who or where that the idea came from, but you do what's best for the city of Pleasantville. That's what the people that brought me in here, I did with the vet group. We always did what was best for the city of Pleasantville. And it happened a year like we had last year. We got projects that sitting on the table. We got developers looking at those projects, saying, okay, I'm not going to do anything until we see what happens with, with this project. And, you know, the bottom line of, of this is that when you fix the infrastructure of the city, you move it forward and then that will help the growth of the city for new businesses to be attracted to coming in and tying into our system and, and moving forward. So what you doing? So we bring this back and, and we do what's best for the city of Pleasantville. Again, man, here, a great example. I said, if, if somebody wanted to buy your truck and your equipment for ten thousand dollars, and you say, well, Dad, I'm in the jam, we got to supply it for ten thousand dollars. Then somebody else comes up, you founded yourself there, like seventy-five thousand dollars. And somebody's going to lease it, you, you use it for eight hours, and then somebody's going to lease it for the next sixteen, that'd be a great deal for you because you kept your equipment. We had a chance to keep our, keep our equipment, keep our grants, our state aid, our federal aid, our state grants, our federal grant, and ability to build our city out and not have the meetings that we have where the employees of the city might not get paid, or we may have to lay off staff and things of this nature. We do what's right. Sometimes you gotta say, well, Dad, you know what? I should have came up with the idea, but that was good, that was great. And take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
God bless the city, bless the.